Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Here.
Ms. Chinowith?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of previous meetings. That would be July 9th and July 16th. July 9th was a special meeting. July 16th was a regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smythe, second by Mr. Lewis. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Additions to the agenda? I don't believe there are any. Okay, petitions and communications. If anyone would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or anything that your heart desires that's not on the agenda, please fill out one of these cards, and I'll call on you. First is Michael Metzler. State your name and address, and keep your remarks to no longer than five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Michael Metzler. I live at 400 J Street, Savoy. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Police Civilian Review Board. As many of you know, I spent 27 years working for the citizens of Urbana, and I couldn't keep my mouth shut any longer. The citizens of Urbana need to wake up. They're allowing a handful of activists to dictate how your police department runs, and how it operates. This agenda-driven proposal that's before you tonight needs to be reconsidered. While this squeaky minority that's driving this proposal is loud, they aren't necessarily accurate. Law enforcement's the most scrutinized profession in society. We have lawyers, we have judges, juries, civil courts, criminal courts, appellate courts, and the media, looking at every move police officers make. They take years to study and pass judgment on decisions and actions that officers take. Many times, those decisions and those actions are taken in a split second in order to defend someone's life. The judicial system sitting in review of officers' decisions and actions rely on facts, and they provide everyone with due process and representation. Facts, if we're going to rely on what some of the supporters of this proposal say and write in public, are not important to your process here. Ms. Chinowith is a perfect example. Someone who can have the unmitigated gall to call Champaign police officers murderers in the death of an individual as they were trying to take him in custody, refuses to acknowledge facts, is a prime example. It doesn't fit the agenda. Ms. Pat, in a recent letter to the editor, former councilperson, again, in public, mentions an investigation into a former officer. She neglects to offer facts. The person alluded to in that letter, the victim alluded to in that letter, was interviewed, and the only reason the city of Urbana didn't proceed to get rid of that, or attempt to rid themselves of that officer earlier, is because the attorneys for the city and the politicians put a stop to it. It wasn't the police department. It was the politicians who did it. But again, those facts don't fit the agenda that's before us here. No Urbana officer dedicated to the oath that they took when they assumed this job fears a critical review of what they do. We don't fear their actions, or review of the actions or the decisions they make, as long as those reviews, or that review, is not agenda-driven out of hatred or distrust and dislike of police officers. The proposal that's before you tonight, at the outset, has been designed to work against the police, and not towards a sound, reasoned approach where the police and the citizens can work together. I've worked with citizens in this community, in all neighborhoods, for over 27 years. The citizens and the police can work together when not driven or inflamed by the words and the actions of activists who have something else in mind. The committee to study this issue was appointed by the mayor and stacked with anti-police activists, and people who have spent much of their time embroiled in the criminal justice There is no reason that Urbana police officers, the majority of whom are honest and honorable people, should fear an honest and honorable review. Unfortunately, the proposal that's before you, though, does not accomplish that goal. It's designed to be stacked so that the officers do not have the redress that's afforded to everyone else in the criminal justice system. An example of that is there's no reason that someone with experience and training in law enforcement or procedural due process should be excluded from such a board. The only reason that that proposal stands the way it is, is because of the agenda that is driving this. If you come back with something that's reasonable, and protects the due process rights of every citizen, police officers included, and allows them in the process, then that's something that we can all work with and work towards. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
There might be some questions here. Ms. Chinowith?
Mike, I have a question for you, if you would entertain it. It's just a simple question about your employment while you were here.
I'm sorry?
Were you involved in internal investigations when you were with the police department for, what was it, 25 years?
I was on the front lines of many of them, yes.
Okay. And were you involved in the investigation of Greg Brown in Champaign?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Mike?
Mr. Smythe?
I'm not used to you guys actually asking people questions.
We'd ask them a lot, actually.
Usually, let them go.
Okay. Okay, you've given one example of an aspect of the proposal that doesn't work towards what you view as a mutually satisfactory result, the exclusion of trained individuals. That's one thing. In light of the fact that this proposal is probably patterned after weaker versions of review boards around the country, weaker than the Iowa City one, what other things do you think are missing here? What things do you think are wrong? I mean, you've made a lot of criticisms of it, but you've given only one small example of what you say is wrong. What's missing?
If you truly want to review the policies of the police department, the actions of the people that are involved, then allow the chief of police, and the people that have been trained, and have been dedicated to the citizens of Urbana, to do their job. Once the chief has reviewed an investigation, and has determined, based on his findings, whether or not an officer has either violated policy, whether he has violated decorum, whether he has broken the law, those kinds of things, there's procedures in place to address that. Those officers that, on the rare occasion we have that step over that line and violate the law, and I admit, we have had officers do that, in my opinion, and we have worked damn hard in the police department to get ourselves rid of those people. But it's the people, the bean counters, and the attorneys, and the politicians, who don't want those things to happen, because, a number of reasons.
Mike, okay, but the way that the process is set up, basically, the review board would be an appellate review of the chief's investigation and decisions. So, I'm not following what-
If it's a review, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Smythe, if it's merely in a review or an appellate, what's the point of the push for subpoena powers?
Well, to have some level of independence, to be able to ask when necessary, actually, the biggest one for my concern was to provide some cover to those who might not be willing to speak in public. So, you know, the main gist of this is actually a review of the chief's findings, and in most cases, what we've seen is that the review boards like this basically come back and said that the chief's decision was correct, that the officers behaved appropriately, and so on, and, you know, we're going to have trained individuals as members of that board with a police advisor to that board, so I'm having a little trouble understanding all of your criticisms here.
The exclusion, though, the exclusion of people who are either no longer in law enforcement, or have had any law enforcement experience, is a little confounding, then. Why would you exclude a citizen of Urbana, somebody who lives in Urbana, retired police officer, or a person who worked for 10, 15 years for the city of Urbana?
Yeah, well, you know, yeah, you know, I wonder, you know, I have the same question. Would you exclude a former council member, for example, a former mayor, or something like that?
Apparently not.
Well, no, but, you know, remember, council members, no, council members are sworn peace officers, so that's a question I have for Ron, our city attorney, at some point, you know, because, so, the mayors and council members are actually, you know, have some capacity as sworn peace officers, so my interpretation is that they would be excluded. We're excluding felons, that's sort of the trade-off here, that was something the police department wanted, so there's a trade here for these two things. I mean, I'd be willing to, you know, we've had a lot of people criticize us and say, "Well, why are you excluding felons? We could just drop both of those exclusions." I mean, that's, you know, something we could do, and maybe that's something we could do in your review.
What prompted me to come forward tonight, after all this time, is the information that's being put out that is simply factually inaccurate, based on firsthand knowledge.
Yeah, and you know-
And that is disturbing to me, and that's-
And last week, I tried to allude to that, because it really bothered me that we were, you know, bringing in all these examples that weren't really relevant to Urbana, and-
Some of them were relevant to Urbana.
Some of them were relevant, yeah, but a number of them weren't, and, you know, I really didn't want to beat a dead horse, basically. And I agree with you, we have a very professional department, we just need a little bit, you know, so, you know, what you're saying is that an appellate review might not be inappropriate?
I have no fear of that, and neither, I don't think anyone else does, in law enforcement.
Then, to me, I think that's what we're trying to pass here.
I think that's the way the ordinance is written. There's been a lot of discussion about what's in the ordinance, and people debating each other, but if you read the ordinance, it's not an independent investigation, it's strictly appellate, and it's about the process, it's not about the individual officer.
I hope that is how it actually turns out.
Okay, well, I would hope that people would give it a year, and if there's something wrong with it, it can be fixed, but there's built into it a two-year review.
That is reasonable.
So, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything. When I walked in here, I was just going to say, while I was critical of the earlier draft, I wanted this, I support this draft, but after Mike Metzler spoke, I felt the need to say something about a couple of things, a couple of points that he made. First, he referred to a small group of people who are pushing this. I think Mike may have taken one of my political science courses, I'm not sure whether he did.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, all right. Well, what we know is that usually, public policies are started by a group of people that interest themselves in that sector of public politics, and that's how things get started, so it's not unusual in any realm of public policy that, you know, not everybody in the city of Urbana is going to come simultaneously to a proposed law in particular policy. So even if Mike is right about that, there's nothing unusual in that being part of the process. The second thing that I want to say is, this was an issue in the campaign, I believe that the mayor and her campaign had stood for this, and informed the voters of this, and I know some of the people who are on council now had declared themselves for this. So I think, both in terms of the initiation of it, but also in terms of the electoral process, this deserves some legitimacy. I noted that in the city of Champaign, there were certain people who had said they were committed to certain positions on this, they were elected, and they followed through with their electoral commitments. Also, in regard to due process, given the fact that it is really the chief who has such an important role in all of this, I have a faith, and I would certainly expect that the chief would see to it that his officers are given due process, and not tolerate any kind of violation of due process, and I would hope that the officers on the force would have confidence enough in the chief that this would happen. The only other point I want to mention is the exclusion of officers, and the exclusion of people who had in the past been officers. One of the answers that councilperson Smythe gave was, well, there was kind of a deal that was brokered here, of there would be exclusion of felons, and then an exclusion of police officers, and past police officers, and of course, exclusion of felons is the exclusion of people who had at one time committed a felony. Last time I was here, I proposed that maybe it would be better to say anybody who in the last 10 years had been convicted of a felony, and had not repeated that sort of thing. The final point I want to make is that, it seems to me, the reason for the exclusions of people in law enforcement, or people with backgrounds in law enforcement, is any group of people develops a kind of interest that circulates around their profession, or their identification, and the idea of a civilian review board is to get people who are not of that profession to take a look at situations, to ask the chief to look into something, to bring it to this board, and then the board can initiate, and I think it's a good thing, Mike, and some investigation of its own, based upon the ability to subpoena documents, et cetera. But I think the important point here is, and I'm sorry that Mike sees this as a police-hating initiative, I very much appreciate the protection and the service that the police have offered the city of Urbana. I think overall, this is a police force of which we can be proud. We have had some unfortunate experiences, and I think that's true of any force. I would say that probably this force is an excellent force compared with many other police forces, but I still think that any governmental entry, and particularly one that has the legitimate use of force and compulsion over the population, is itself better off with a review board that hopefully would serve them justly, and hopefully would serve the citizens of Urbana justly. I would not like to see people regard this as an antagonistic thing. People rightly will criticize a police department, or individual police officers, when they do things that are regarded as wrong, and they should do that, but that should not be taken to mean that any of the people who are advocating of this hate the police department in Urbana. I don't, I'm grateful to it. Thank you.
James Winston. Could you please state your address? And, if you would, by the way.
Yes, ma'am. James Winston, 1306 Eureka. I'm here in regards to dangerous animals, and particularly dogs. In 1988, my next-door neighbor was here, and one of the residents of Urbana came forth, and they had been victims of a dangerous dog attack, in both cases it was rottweilers. Actually, the rottweiler didn't attack them, they attacked the other two people's dogs, and that they were out, at least, you know, violating the law, and the dog attacked them. And so, we put a motion forward, and did some work, and in 1988, the city council chose to, well, excuse me, I play on words, to put some teeth in the ordinance, because the ordinance was something like 70 years old, I mean, when the ordinance was written, a dangerous dog, and Urbana was when I was growing up as a kid, and, you know, that was a collie and beagle mix, you know, but that's not the case anymore. We got rottweilers and pit bulls on every corner. When I was leaving my neighborhood, four houses down from my house, as I was leaving the day, a young man got out of his car, and he got out, his pit bull got out of the car, no leash, he's running around, but of course, he believes that he's got complete control over his dog, and it's happening in the neighborhood daily. I walk in the morning, it's about 6 o'clock, and I see young, old, in-between, black, white, everybody, when they walk around, they got a stick in their hand, and I talk to people, and since people know that the work I'm doing to try to get this changed, a lot of people have shared experiences with me that they've had with dogs, and I know people who walk around with sticks, golf clubs, baseball bats, I've even talked to a gentleman who said that, you know, he had a pistol in his pocket, it's just that serious, these dogs are dangerous, these dogs are killers. What really got my attention, last year in Chicago, a young man had a newborn baby, and he decided to buy two pit bull pups to bring up with his baby. At 2 years old, he left the room, and the baby was 2 years old, and the pit bulls, two of them, they tore the baby apart, and he came forward, and he's on a vendetta now in Chicago, and he's trying to educate people about pit bulls. What I'm here to ask, well, three weeks ago, what really got me to really going again, was my granddaughter was outside playing, and one of my neighbor's dogs got loose and chased her on top of, and she jumped up on top of a neighbor's car, and so the kid come running in, and they said, "Mr. Winston, the pit bull has got a lycia," you know, so I run out, and on my way out, I'm, you know, I'm panicked, because, you know, pit bulls after my grandbaby, 11 years old, and I run out, and on my way through the kitchen, I did grab a steak knife, but I went out, the neighbor had the dog, and was taking him away, but she was scared half to death. Now, many neighbors was out in the street at that time, and some was hollering to her, "Don't run," some was hollering, "Run," she ain't know what to do. She, the fight or flight syndrome kicked in, she took flight. So what I'm here tonight, ask the city council, I've learned over the years, you know, again, people know that this is a pet peeve of mine, and people have shared stories with me, and I used to be anti-pit bull, anti-rottweiler, anti-dangerous dog, period, but I've had people come forward, have shared experiences with me, where these dogs have actually been benefited, instrumental to them, you know, I read statistics that say that elderly people who have dogs as pets, that they actually can increase their quality of life and quantity of life. So I'm not here to say I'm yea or nay about dogs, what I am here for, to ask the city council for, is some education. You know, there's an ancient saying, that people are destroyed because of lack of knowledge, and I think it certainly applies here. After this incident, my granddaughter and the little other kids that were around, there was one other little boy that was on top of the car with them, and so they asked me, they said, "Grandpa, Mr. Winston, so what do we do, you know, when a dog chases us again?" And I didn't know what to tell them, and so I said, "Well, I'll go and ask maybe the animal control people, or somebody in the community that has some wisdom about this, can we, you know, somewhere, city of Urbana channel, public park, somewhere, can we educate kids, and these people who walk? What do you do when a dangerous dog attacks you?" I mean, just about two weeks ago, I was coming here, and I came here, but it was the wrong time, but my wife called me in another room, she said, "I want to show you something." She said, "You're going over to the city council to have animal control to educate people about what to do when a dangerous dog attacks you." And there on CBS News was an animal control officer, and she got out of her truck to get this pit bull, and she got out, and she was getting her thing with the noose on it, ready and everything, pit bull comes out from around the truck, jumps over the thing in her hand, chumps on her wrist, and here's the animal control officer begging and screaming for help. And, you know, not saying that she was, you know, unprofessional, or other, I don't know, but can somebody come forward and help us, which is problematic, because any day now, very soon, the kids will be walking back and forth to school, and I watch those kids walking back and forth on Goodwin, and as many pit bulls as we have in our neighborhoods now, what do they do if a pit bull attacks them? You know, I've read about kids who have been killed, and seriously injured, when a pit bull attacks, they're on the sidewalk, the street and traffic is four feet away from that, and they turn and take flight, they ain't thinking about car in the street, all they're thinking about is, "Get away from that pit bull." So they're actually running, traffic, get hit by cars, because they, you know, they just take off out of fear. So that's what I'm here for, to ask, is some kind of way that we can educate the children, the young, the old, the people walking around with the sticks, the guns in their pockets, can we give some education? What can we do to defend ourselves in a situation like this?
Okay, I appreciate you coming here, and we will talk to our animal control officer, we'll see what kind of programs maybe are being done in other cities, if we can find something, we'll adopt it, if not, we'll have to invent one, but I agree, it's a serious problem, and people need to know how to deal with it. Anyone on the council? Did you want to say something? Okay.
Well, I'd just like to add that, you know, I've come over here to bring this problem to you and ask you for help, and I just want you to know that, you know, if there's anything that I can do to be of help in this, by all means, let me know, and I would gladly do what I can.
Okay. Ms. Chinowith?
Since I've had some problems with dogs off the leash in my neighborhood too, I've found, when I call the animal control officer, typically, they're there very quickly, and so I would definitely encourage spreading the word around, that, you know, you can call the animal control officer, and as quickly as she can get out, she can get out and help to, you know, get the dog back to the house where they need to go. It's also against the law to have a dog without the leash, so you can take it a step further, if you'd like, as well.
Well, I really understand that, and we've had instances where we call animal control, sometime they were able to get out, one time we called animal control, and the city of Urbana didn't have an animal control officer, so they had to call the city of Champaign. A police officer responded to the call, and he was out trying to get the pit bull, so he could, you know, do something, get him in a squad car or something, and he got a call about something criminal was going on, and he jumped in his car, he said, "Where you going? The pit bull's still loose." He said, "I'm sorry, I've got a, you know, high priority, you know, crime going on here as the league is running around." So I understand that, but what I'm after is just one-on-one situation, you're in a one-on-one situation, pit bull or rottweiler's after you, what do you do? You don't have a cell, you can't call anybody, you've just got to take care of you. What do you do? What's the wisest thing to do? Do you take off running, and just hope you can outrun it? Do you stand still? And some people say, "Look at me in the eye," some people say, "Don't look at me in the eye," I don't know, I don't know. I just want to get something from some people, because I don't want to keep telling these kids, "Mr. Winston said, this is what you do," and then, "Mr. Winston told me to do, it don't work," and they end up hurt somewhere, and Mr. Winston is, you know, because I gave them consulting knowledge. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Barack Rosenstein, 2013, Curriton, 7th ward. At the end of this last meeting, there was discussion about the Philo Road Beautification Project, and implications that there may be some meetings on this topic. I propose, that they've come to propose that there be a meeting before the consultants begin their work, much like the first meeting we had on Orchard Downs, in which local residents can present both their concerns, and where possible, suggestions for- can present both their concerns and, where possible, suggestions for improvements. I propose there be additional meetings with the consultants where they can present the drafts of their plan. I also propose that any proposal should include references to specific problems and discuss ways in which those problems may be addressed. I'm particularly concerned about three problems. One, the eyesore created by the abandoned IGA building, the adjacent strip mall, the treeless parking lot, and the almost-empty narrow strip, planting strip in front of those buildings. I would like to see a specific plan to address this eyesore as a whole. I never, where, no, uh-huh.
This is on our desk.
Your desk, okay. Oh, okay, so this is done.
You want to say this?
Okay. I also hope there'll be, that the eyesore created by the former Jewel Building, now a storage building, the treeless parking lot in front of that building, and the concrete barriers that are still sitting in the treeless parking lot. And, of course, the lack of trees in the Sunny Crest Parking Area. I think the lampposts on Main Street are wonderful, particularly the double-light holders on Main Street and the quadruple-light holders at the entrances, the three entrances to Lincoln Square. I would love to see similar lampposts on Fido Road as proposed in Bill Gray's memo. But I believe the three eyesores are a major problem that should be addressed first. Others, of course, may have their different top three lists. So, I'm proposing, okay, so that the informational meeting will take place before the consultants begin their work. Is that, is that what I see here, Charlie? Okay. Thank you.
We're glad that you're happy. Next, Carol Ammons. Is Carol Ammons here? Okay, she was in favor of civilian review board. Brenda Davis, also in favor. I have a group of people who have already spoken on this issue before, and I would ask, in the interest of time, that you limit your remarks to something new that you haven't said before. First is Robert Dunn.
Again, this is the fourth, my name is Robert Dunn, my address is 804 Southern Urbana. I would like to, something new I'd like to share with you is my experience with a ride-along that I happen to participate in with an Urbana police officer, and I have his permission to use his name, this is Officer Dean Hazen. The areas that we were in were fairly low-income areas, and from what I have observed from him, and mind you, this is only an hour, I mean, one morning, so this is like a glimpse of what it's like to be in a police officer's shoes. I saw nothing that warrants the treatment and the statements that I've read in the newspaper, that I've read on blogs, comparing the Urbana Police Department to Nazis, of all people, to racist death squads. I mean, come on here, I mean, who on this city council, and I honestly don't want to lecture tonight, Mr. Smythe, thank you, who, who up here supports that types of, that type of statements? Because, guess what? The supporters of this review ward are posting anonymously to various blogs referring to our police department as people who are too stupid to get a real job, Nazis, and racist death squads. So, my question is, why is the behavior from the officer that I rode along with the exact opposite from what I have just described, from what I've, what I've heard? From what I have seen, the officer was, was not racist, was very polite to the African-American people that he dealt with, but he didn't receive the same type of treatment. There are many reasons why, and they have been said over and over again by Lieutenant Metzler, by Mistevinson, why this review board is not necessary, but unfortunately, common sense doesn't reign on this board. So, all I got to say is, 2009 is approaching soon. Some of you, you know, got by with no opposition. I'm sorry to say, that's not going to be the case in 2009, so if you don't want that to happen, I really would urge you to change your mind and go something else. I mean, we have an opportunity to create better relations with our police department without this review board. However, five of you don't want to hear it. Five of you don't want to listen to any reason, don't want to listen to any suggestions, which is totally different from the people who are in support of the police review board in Champaign, who are willing to come up with different alternatives rather than a draconian review board. And so, I'm in the minority, common sense unfortunately is in the minority, and so, I don't know what's going to happen, but I just pray that nothing bad happens after this. And so, I tried, and it looks like I might fail, but...
Okay. Thank you very much. Rick Stewart?
I swore I wasn't going to come up here tonight. Oh, well. You know, it's just something that was said a few minutes ago, I just, I wanted to just ask the question, I wanted to make sure I heard it right. The Citizens' Police Review Board will be an appeals process? Is that what I heard you say, Charlie? I don't remember.
No, it's, it's a review process.
Right, it's an appellate review of what the chief...
Right.
Okay, I, just making sure I heard it right, and I, I've, I had a hard time getting correct ordinance online, because there was one with comments and crossouts, I wanted to make sure I got it right, but it is in there that officers won't be subpoenaed, correct?
Right. The, the corrected version with the notes was there, and also the final version, but what you, what you brought up last time was put into the ordinance. To make it perfectly clear that, that officers are not subpoenaed, okay?
Okay. And just to make it clear again, it is, the intent of the Citizens' Review Board here is to review the policies, the procedures of the process, not the individual officer.
Exactly.
Okay. I have just some questions I had, I want to make sure I heard it right. Does anyone have questions for me?
That, that was the side letter with the FOP, and we believe that's state law, so that's why we're doing it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Welch?
My name is Fred Welch. I live at 2201 Vauder Street in Urbana, and I might add that I've lived there for 43 years, and never have I felt threatened, harassed, or have had my civil rights violated by the Urbana Police. And furthermore, some of my friends are whiners. They'll tell you about every ache and pain that they have, but never have I heard one of my neighbors or any of my people in the workplace complain about mistreatment by the Urbana Police. So, I have to wonder, what is the justification for even proposing this ordinance? It seems unnecessary and unjustified. We already have federal, state, and local laws that cover such matters. We have Federal Civil Rights Act, we have groups responsible for police review, we have the Urbana Human Relations Office, and I guess, do we also have a Human Relations Commission?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay, that seems, it just seems redundant to me to offer the ordinance as now written. I'm going to refer to some particular passages in the ordinance, and so, Mayor, I assume that each of the city council members have a copy of the proposal before them, and I invite them to have that handy. On page one, the fifth whereas indicates that the ordinance will enhance public safety. Now, whose safety will be enhanced? Law abiders or law violators? The only way that I know that my safety can be enhanced is if it reduces criminal activity. But I fear that this ordinance will increase criminal activity. Why? I fear that some police officers may become lax in enforcing the law simply because they feel threatened by, and perhaps mistreated by a civilian review board. I am much more concerned about this ordinance increasing crime than I am about one policeman possibly making one mistake. The entire fifth whereas implies that we would have greater safety except for the misconduct of the Urbana Police. But nowhere do you say that our safety is threatened by those who disobey the law. You ought to point that out. If an ordinance is too restrictive, it very well could make it more difficult for Urbana to hire good police officers. Why? Because the potential hire could reason, why should I file for employment in Urbana when I could do so with the county sheriff, with the U of I police, or with the Champaign police without undergoing or feeling threatened by a review board based on the review board's past action? I call your attention to page two, section 19 and 22. I like that section. You speak about the qualifications for membership on the Criminal Review Board. I like that idea. Those criteria would be appropriate for almost any commission, committee, or task force. But I go back to page one, and the first whereas, where you talk about the mayor establishing a citizens' task force to study the desirability and feasibility of creating a civilian review board, where the criteria mentioned on page two applied in making appointments to this task force. That is, was it an unbiased task force? How many members were there on the task force? What was the ratio of men to women? Were there any 76 young men on the task force? I had to work that in. How many Republicans were there? How many Democrats? How many Green Party? Were their meetings, the task force meetings, well-attended by their members? Were detailed minutes kept? And if so, are they public information? I'm going to, back to page two now, to indicate my main concern is who will make up the review board, and will they be unbiased? Your ordinance, as now reads, does not allow police officers on the board, but you do allow criminals. Criminals...
Mr., Mr. Welch, I'm afraid that's incorrect.
What are you referring to?
You said that we would not allow police officers, but we would allow criminals. It does not say that. It does not say, it does not say that in the ordinance, okay?
What does it say? What, let me make sure I'm on the same page.
It says, no person, this is section 19-22, and it's item C, no person with a criminal felony conviction or plea shall be eligible to serve on the CRB.
Our, it says, no person with a felony conviction.
It says criminal felony conviction or plea.
Yes, I understand that. But what did I say? I said, "You allow criminals to be on the board." And I would ask, the city attorney is a person who committed a crime, not a criminal. If a person has committed 12 misdemeanors, they are a criminal. And so, I am saying, with all respect, Mayor, that the ordinance, as now written, allows criminals on the review board. Are we together? The only thing that does...
Actually, we're not, but anyway, proceed.
The only thing it does not allow is felony criminals. There are many crimes that are not a felony. Oh, feel free to interrupt me if any...
I, I just wanted you to, to stick to five minutes. I think you've exceeded your time at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't...
We've asked people to limit their remarks to five minutes, so I think you've exceeded your time, so could you please wrap up?
Yes, I would really like to say something else. You indicated earlier that a number of people have appeared before the council a number of times, or more than once. This is my first time, and so, I would ask that you grant me a little bit of leniency.
How much time would you like?
Oh, I would say three minutes.
How about wrapping it up in one more minute? Does that seem fair to you?
That disturbs me as a citizen of Urbana.
Well, we have other people that are waiting to talk, and we do have a whole agenda, so...
I appreciate, Mayor, that everyone has time restraints, but in this ordinance, that I feel getting it right is more important than two or three minutes, and so, that's why I requested that I allow...
Okay, well, I would like you to please wrap it up, okay?
On page eight, you indicate that the review, review board should have the power to subpoena witnesses. This sounds like you want the board to have judicial power. This would be entirely appropriate. And what does it mean in that same section when you say that the board would have power to exclude witnesses? I'll tell you what it sounds to me like. It sounds like the board would have the right to hear the witnesses who might say what they want to hear, but they have, also have the right to exclude the witnesses that they did not want to hear. And that does not sound fair. The last item I will hit because of the time restraints is page 10, where it deals, section 1941, deals with the budget. If I were a member of the city council and asked to vote on this ordinance tonight, I would not do so without an estimated range of the annual budget. And you give no absolute ins... And you give no absolute insubordination in this regard. You indicate that the task force studied various proposals from different cities. Surely, some of those, or else you asked the question, what is the cost? If you know that the annual cost of the civilian review board was equivalent to putting ten additional police on the street, might this not, might you not feel differently if you knew the cost was two policemen? You're good listeners, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Richard Reynolds.
Hello. Richard Reynolds, I live at seven oh five, South Urbana. First, I'd like to thank Danielle for speaking out for what you believed in and for what you felt best, was best for this community, standing up for what is right in the face of opposition isn't always easy. I hope that all of you will vote in favor of this review board. I think that a lot of people have forgotten or don't seem to bring up, the review board can side with the police officer just as easily as they can side with a civilian. And in most cases, that's probably what will happen. You'll probably see a lot of complaints that will require a paper shredder. Police officers, like any occupation, there's good ones and there's bad ones for human beings. I don't, my interpretation of this board is not that it is a witch hunt on police One thing that really bothers me is I, apparently, there's no accountability right now. An Urbana police officer recently testified under oath that Urbana police are allowed to do anything they desire while on duty. How is that possible? I don't know. One thing I read in the News Gazette was that retaliation by police will not be tolerated against complainants. Last summer, the house across the street from me was broken into, and my neighbor had chased the suspect into the backyard and had him cornered when the police arrived. The officer who responded to the call refused to go into the backyard. He said he had better things to do, and he got in his car and he left. Two weeks later, the house next door was broken into, the same officer responded, and he told that neighbor that he does not have time to keep coming to our neighborhood every time a house is broken into. A joint formal complaint was filed. Then, this past January, my next-door neighbors came home to find a man prying their front door open with a crowbar. Since we only live two blocks away, he drove, they drove down here and were told to go back home, which I think is ridiculous, but that's beside the point, and that the police would meet them there. No one ever showed up. And that's the reality of what happens to people who file police, or complaints against police officers. So, I just wanted to say, I'm glad to see that was in there. Actually, I think everything else I had written down here has already been said. I'm in support of it. I know a lot of you put a lot of time in it, and I thank you for your hard work.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Reynolds, what do you do for a living?
I'm an electrician.
And do you have civilians that don't like the work you do?
Uh, probably.
And who do they come to?
My boss.
Exactly. Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? I'm one of those people who's spoken before on this, so I'll try to just limit myself to what I haven't said before. With one exception, if I could, I want to thank you again for this process, the openness of it and the willingness to make adjustments along the way, you know, as people made comments and just to respond to some of the remarks that were made before. There've been a lot of people in these chambers who've expressed opinions for or against this. The vast majority of them have been for it. And I'll just add to that, that I personally collected petitions for this, and, you know, you approach somebody, you don't know if they're going to be for it or not. And I've knocked on doors for this, which is pretty random, and you don't know if somebody's going to be for it or against it when they, when they open the door. And I've found almost everyone that I've spoken to about this to be in favor of the idea. Once they knew about it, a lot of people didn't know about it at that time. I'm sure they know now. But I just also wanted to add, this process has been very careful and meticulous, in fact, compared to the fast and loose and uninformed editorials in the News Gazette. And that's not something I need to lecture you guys on, but I wanted to say that to you, since they've decided to attack a couple of you on that and express their surprise about some of the proposals that we've discussed for years on this issue. And just to mention also that the current chief of police was on that task force that the mayor set up and was very helpful, I thought. And I got to know him, and I very much appreciated his input, as well as the Fraternal Order of Police president at that time was on that task force and also had some very helpful comments. I didn't, and, you know, for, if my neighbor, Mr. Welch, would like to see those, those meetings were all videotaped, as you all know. But those deliberations were very civil and very collaborative, and I think it was the model of the way government ought to work, actually, myself. But I also, I just wanted to add one other thing about Charlie Smythe had asked me a question last time I spoke, and I had responded kind of in a general way, but I went back and looked at the Iowa City ordinance. You had asked me what were some of the differences in that ordinance and what you have before you now, and I shared the ordinance with Mr. Smythe. But I just wanted to mention, I, you know, I had not looked at it in a while, so I went back and looked over it. It's similar in a lot of ways. They have five members instead of seven. They have a separate budget, which is also not in the ordinance, but they have, instead of the, what the plan is here for the human relations officer to staff the police review board, they had, they have attorney's fees, which are the major part of their budget. It only adds up to about $2,000, and the major part of that is those attorney fees every year. But they do have the power to hire an investigator, which they haven't done, except maybe once, as I mentioned last time. They do have subpoena power, but they've rarely used it. And in fact, as was mentioned here earlier, almost every case, they have agreed with the police department's internal investigation. And so, a number of things didn't happen. The world didn't come to an end when they passed this. They did have an initial spike of complaints afterwards as people realized there was a new procedure, and then the number of complaints dropped precipitously where it stays now. There's very, very few complaints every year. They, as I said, they usually agreed with the internal police investigation. Crime did not go up, as I think a couple of people now have claimed would happen, even though, you know, supposedly now we're discussing facts. If we're looking at facts, I don't think you can find a city that has the kind of police review board we're talking about where police, where the crime went up afterwards as a result. And I'd just like to say that I spoke with the chair there, a couple of the previous chairs, they feel that it's working, they feel that it has helped police and community relations in their community. They have had to demand a number of records on a couple of occasions, mainly one that they recall when I spoke with them, where they had to ask for, for example, the actual recording of a police dispatch. That was only one time in several years that they had to ask for those, just to see what had actually happened in a case where they couldn't really tell from the internal police investigation, you know, the exact nature of what had been going on in a particular case. But very rarely did they even need to ask for any additional information. I just thought I would share that since it came up last time. And, you know, and again, I appreciate this process, and I thank you for your work and for your ability to sit and take your licks when a few people do come up and have some harsh words for you. I respect that. And I don't know if you, I think you know basically what I think, so, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
Danielle Chinowitz.
I just have one question, Ricky, which is, since you've looked at far more review board ordinances than I have, I have looked at maybe five. Have you, have you ever seen one where the word "police" was missing from the title of it? Because I have been looking, and usually it's pretty clear that it's a review board of the police department or the police. Have you noticed that?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay.
You know, there are a lot of them, so that's not to say that it isn't there, but not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would add that the meetings of the task force were televised by-
Yes, yes, they were televised.
-UPTV, so it was very public.
I saw a couple of them myself.
Okay, thanks. Evelyn Underwood.
Hello, I'm Dr. Evelyn Underwood, thirteen oh nine West Tremont Street in Urbana, Illinois. Been in Urbana-Champaign for over fifty years, almost sixty. I support this ordinance, or I should say, proposed ordinance in principle, as well as many people that I've spoken with. We believe, however, that the content is weak. This is, however, a first step, although a weak first step, it is a first step, and we thank you. In speaking with relatives and friends who are police persons, they tell me that, number one, the FOP shouldn't worry about this proposed ordinance. It does not affect any rank and file police persons. Number two, the police officer, officers will not be subpoenaed. Three, the CRB can't discipline an officer, only the chief of police, as is currently. We have, they tell me, another set of eyes to help the chief of police, an important set of eyes. I believe, though, that we will have, and maybe I'm being positive, maybe too positive, but it's okay to be positive, I believe, that we will have a better community, more open, and I believe people will see, once we have this, and I'm looking forward to it, that the police, the community, the city council are listening. And that's why I believe many people that I spoke with feel that this is an important first step. But as my police friends tell me, in other states that I've spoken with, just to see what other people are doing, they have some very strong ones. But here, we have a first step, and we thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Adams, I don't believe he's here. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council? Okay, we'll move on. I don't believe there's any old business, reports of standing committees, committee of the whole.
Yes, the committee of the whole met here on July twenty-three and forwarded five ordinances to council with a recommendation to approve each of them. We'll take them in order. First is ordinance two thousand seven oh seven oh eight five. This is the ordinance establishing a civilian review board for the city of Urbana. You'll see that there are two corrections here that were moved as part of the ordinance when it came here. They're in the ordinance, so for the committee, I move the approval of this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Is there any discussion? Ms. Barnes.
I continue to not be in favor of this particular ordinance as it stands today. Just want to reiterate, I feel this is too far-reaching, and I was in favor of the one that we put forth, you know, a few weeks ago. It is a, I have wondered about the budget, budgetary implications. Do we have any idea?
I think it's a very low budget. If Iowa City has $2,000-
$2,000 a year?
I believe that's what it is. We're talking about using existing staff, which is the human relations office, so we're not talking about hiring staff. There, I don't think there are going to be that many complaints, so it's mostly, the first year, it's going to be the training, and then there'll be continuing education of the people on the board. So I do not see this as being a very expensive thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lewis.
Well, I've spoken to a number of people in my community, Ward Three, I'll call it my community because it's primarily the black community. And I've been in this community, I've been in this community- Hello? He's working with, he's got it fixed. He's got it fixed. And I've been in this community for over all of my life. And when we started this process, I was concerned that there was, it got off on the wrong foot. And when, when the council got involved with the negotiations with the FOP, I said, whoa, here it goes, okay? And the whole intent of this citizens' review board was to assist the community and the police department. It wasn't, it was not an adversarial relationship they're trying to establish. Unfortunately, people took it as an adversarial issue. And in the language we established at the end, this is a first start, and it's good, it's, and, and, I think it could have more meat in it than it's in it, because if you look at statistics, African-Americans are the ones that get hit the most, and they're the ones that are suffering the most as far as our community is concerned about policing in, in most cities. I feel that there's another issue that's beyond us, and that is the fact that we, we can't deal with criminals, we can't deal with felons. We look at our Supreme Court, and you look at their records, and we find out they've got some problems as well. So, you know, what kind of country do we really have? Our society says we have to pay a penalty for what we do. They say that we have to go and spend X number of years, be reformed, come out and regain your rank in society. That doesn't happen for African-Americans. It does not happen. Most of them can't vote, felons can't vote, but they pay taxes, okay? And they pay taxes, and that's taxation without representation. I don't know how you cut the mustard on that one. But that's beyond us here. Hopefully, at some point, at some point down the line, we'll grow up and have the kind of community that can coexist in a homogeneous way, not a heterogeneous- Most of them can't vote, felons can't vote, but they pay taxes, okay? And they pay taxes, and that's taxation without representation. I don't know how you cut the mustard on that one. But that's beyond us here. Hopefully, at some point, at some point down the line, we'll grow up and have the kind of community that can coexist in a homogeneous way, not a heterogeneous way, and come to resolves within our community that make sense. This is a good start. Hopefully, we'll make some inroads into some kind of degree of camaraderie between communities. But, uh, this is needed at a higher level as well. Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson.
Um, as most of the people, um, in my ward know, and, um, lots of other people that I've spoken with, um, they know that, um, my vote on this is a no. Um, I have, um, concerns with it. I guess my biggest concern is that, as I stated to Mr. Reynolds, um, there's a lot of people who have a lot of different professions in this country, and when we have people who make complaints against us, it's our bosses who take care of those complaints, not the other people, um, creating boards that aren't people who are trained in our professions. And, and I have a problem with a, a board that's going to review people that don't know, um, what, what a police officer's duties fully are, even with all the education that's supposedly going to happen with the two thousand dollars, whatever the cost may be. Um, we have the Human Relations Commission, so as Mr. Welch, um, has stated, I do believe this is pretty redundant. Um, I also know that the police officers, a couple of years ago, came up with what I believe they called First Thursdays or First Tuesdays, um, and, uh, no one showed up. So that gave me the signals that there weren't really a lot of problems. Um, the city of Champagne had a special meeting, and, um, they voted no on creating a board of this kind. I go to a website called illinoishomepage.net almost daily, and they have a sidebar on there, and, um, they take little polls. Um, one was, did people like the new, uh, host of, uh, The Price is Right, whoever that might be, I can't remember. Um, over the last week, the question has been, do, um, people believe that, uh, a civilian review board is, um, necessary or, or wanted or, or warranted? And, uh, fifty percent, fifty-six percent have said no, and forty-four percent have said yes. So while I hear, um, Mr. Baldwin, uh, say that he knocks on doors and he's heard people say yes, that it's a good idea, um, this, this poll would, would show differently. Um, I, uh, again, believe that this is redundant, because we do have a Human Relations Commission, and I just heard the, um, mayor say that, that's who they would be, um, having, uh, take the complaint. So, um, we have tremendous police force who are well-educated and, um, take their, uh, jobs seriously. When they have, um, when they are on the job and they have a, a file to do, they do it with knowing that they have a chief who's going to review what they do. And, um, again, I don't believe that, uh, we need to have people who don't know what the chief's position is, um, looking over their shoulders. Um, if, uh, there's a person who's, um, committing a crime and they need the handcuffs put on, I don't want an officer to say, I'm not going to put them on as tight, cause I, I fear that they're going to go and complain. Um, I, I just think it's, it's unnecessary and redundant.
Mr. Smythe.
I'd like to offer three small amendments here. Uh, the first, and I'll, I'll put them all, all three out, I think they're all pretty straightforward. Uh, in the title and everywhere that we refer to civilian review board, I would, uh, like to have it say civilian police review board. And then on page three, uh, section nineteen twenty-six A, um, you know, there's a sidebar comments here from Todd and/or Ron here, and I'd like to try to incorporate some of those, some of that correction. So, uh, about the, uh, seventh line down, where it says, "By a majority of votes shall have access to," I would strike the words, "complaints and supporting documents provided by complainants," so that it would just simply read, "Vote, by a majority of votes shall have access to police reports, incident-related documents, and so on." Uh, so I take out the redundancy there. And then further down, the third item is where it says, "And external documents such as medical records, as provided for under, uh, the, uh, HIPAA Privacy Act." Uh, I would insert that, those, uh, that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight words there. Uh, those are three small amendments, uh, that I would move.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Ms. Chinowith. Any discussion?
Just a quick clarification.
Um, Ms. Chinowith.
Um, it's, it's just to understand Charlie, um, striking the complaints and supporting documents, that's because the civilian review board of police, or the civilian police review board has access to those complaints and supporting documents already.
Right, because.
So it's just the redundancy.
Right, that's all I'm removing, is the redundancy.
Yeah, and just, just quickly, I was up in Minnesota recently, uh, with my sister, it was a very apolitical crowd, and I asked them, I said, "What does a civilian review board mean to you?" Cause I was thinking we'd have these brochures, and it would say civilian review board, and they said, "Well..." And I asked actually twelve people separately, and they said, "Well, it sounds like a review board of civilians." So I think it would be useful to make sure, especially if we're going to be putting the urge out there that we're talking about the police. So, um, I support Charlie's motion for those reasons.
Any other comments on the amendment? Mr. Bowersack?
Well, about the name issue, before we changed the name, I just wondered, it was originally the CPRB, but that changed somewhere along the way. I don't know if that was a particular decision, or the legal reason, or mayor, you had a reason for the name change. Um, is there some important intent there?
I, I always try to shorten things, I'm, that's my philosophy.
So it goes back to CPRB?
I have no problem with, if you want to add police to it, that's fine.
Okay, any other?
Any other questions on the amendment? If not, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Nay.
Okay.
Now, the motion carries, and we have the different votes.
Uh, Ms. Chinowith.
Yeah, I just, I just have a couple of questions, probably, but, I mean, um, just to make sure, what, clear about, well, what the, the words are. The first is at the end of page four. Basically, page four, uh, section nineteen twenty-eight C. I mean, I'm, yeah. So the section is, I look for here, intentionally false allegation. I guess my question was just, um, I think of an allegation, like the media says alleged, they allegedly broke into a house, and so an allegation can really be false, an allegation? It's not actually anything more than that? So I guess I want to be clear that when we say, when we say allegations, would it make more sense to say false, um, statements? Or something that's actually concrete, where it's an allegation, something that, that it's not true or false, it's an allegation? So, uh, what do you mean specifically when you say false allegations here? Would it make sense to type that up?
Um, honestly, I think everyone would probably know what a false allegation means, but if you want to change it to false statement, that would be okay, too. I think that, you know, I think when you add willfully or intentionally false allegations, I mean, the way I would read that is that you've alleged something that you know, in fact, to be false. Um, and, and that's how I read false allegations. I think that's, that's why it, it was worded that way.
And just, um...
As, as, may I say for, as opposed to making a false statement, where you made a statement and it turned out later on to be factually wrong, but you may not have known that it was wrong. An allegation means that, you know, in my mind, that, at least to my way of thinking, that you are alleging something, you are proactively alleging something, and to do so with intent to mislead is what it means to falsely allege.
Okay, basically, right. Um, and, and just a, just a question about nineteen thirty-four A, for the, for the last second. Um, if the question is, uh, the CPRB, the chief of police department, or the chief of, so, so, is, it's kind of unclear to me, what's open and what's closed? Would that, uh, oh, would that happen in open session, or would that happen in closed session?
I don't...
Would it be up to the CPRB to determine that? It's kind of an open, open question, actually, if I can say the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, if this is going to be a situation where the board is convening and wants to speak to the chief, I, I, I believe unless, unless we're going to place this under an exception, talking about a human resources issue, a personnel issue, um, in which case it could be closed, but then, you know, it still has to be recorded and minutes taken and approved and so forth, there's a procedure for that. But otherwise, it would be open. I guess it would just depend on the nature of the discussion that was being had.
Okay. Um, so, thanks for those clarifications. I have just two, I want a motion to make two small changes to this. Both of these changes were recommended by, um, a cursor today, and, and looking over that, and other things that came to me, there's a lot of recommendations, I just have two, but I think are small, clarifying. The first is unfair performance, and the fifth, whereas, the proposal is at the very end of that, to state, it says, um, individual needs to reduce citizen complaints regarding this officer conduct. I'd like to add, at the operation of the city of Urbana Police Department. That's the first, and then the second part of my motion is section nineteen thirty-six D. Nineteen thirty-six, part D. It says, uh, the board may discontinue its review of a complaint for lack of interest. If the complainant fails to attend the hearing, I'd like to add, without good cause. Um, so if someone is in an accident or, or something comes up, that it's clear that we, which is odd, I think this continues. So, those two pieces are my motion.
I'd second that.
And if I could just speak to the motion very briefly. The first is, I think, as we've been talking about this, it really feels important... I think that, I think that the usefulness of this in particular is looking at police department policies. I, I don't think that this is really an inspection of individual officers. I think it's pretty, been pretty clear, officers don't appear before the CPRB, officers can't be subpoenaed, officers can't be disciplined. Um, I think Reverend Underwood kind of summarized it for the public very well when she spoke. What I think is important about this is that this is an opportunity for the public to kind of, in many ways, see how department policy plays out, and to, you know, review how the police, kind of the big picture rather than the small picture. And I think the police department could really benefit from that. As a council member, things that I've brought up before as policy changes have been, um, welcomed by the police department and by the chief, the two chiefs I've worked with. And so I think it's important for us to make sure that it's framed as, that, you know, we're looking at complaints against officers, but we also, the spirit of this, of this is looking at the operation of the city of Urbana Police Department as a whole. Those are my two changes.
Um, that's a motion by, um, Ms. Chinowith, was it seconded by Mr. Smythe? Are there any other questions or comments on this? Uh, Ms. Barnes.
I, I hear what you're saying, Danielle, but that's a tricky two-sided coin, I think, because also, to, to use the phrase, "The operations of the police department," also, I think, brings it down, uh, to a level of, of, of really what the chief's job is. And again, I, I, I saw this, you know, as really a, more of a review of the chief's work. And so I think those added words add, um, additional control, which I, of course, um, am opposed to. So that's just my take on the use of those words.
Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion, um, which would change the fifth, whereas, to add after police officer conduct and the operation of the Urbana Police Department. And also on page eight, section nineteen dash thirty-six D, uh, the board may, it says a board may discontinue its review of a complaint for lack of interest if the complainant fails to attend the hearing, and this new motion would, um, this new amendment would add, "Without good cause." Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, I believe the motion carries. Okay, uh, we're ready to go to the ordinance with the two amendments. Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, quick question for Ron here. Uh, on page five, section nineteen twenty-eight, item O, which has complaints concerning incidents predating...
I'm sorry, Mr. Smythe, I'm sorry, could you...
Page five.
Uh-huh.
Item O, which is nineteen, section nineteen twenty-eight, item O. Its complaints concerning incidents predating the creation of the board will not be accepted. Um, there's no real date associated with this, is, you know, once the mayor signs it, does that mean the board's been created? Or once the board has been through its educational processes and is ready to convene, is that when, when complaints get taken? What, what's the starting point?
Um, that's actually an excellent question, and a lot of times, we, um, in ordinances that have drafted in the past, that we will put that kind of language in. For purposes of this, I think, uh, would you agree that we could do it, we could start it from when, it starts to operate from the time that this ordinance is created? I mean, obviously, there's going to be, it's going to be an issue of when the board members are picked and when, um, um, they get trained, but since we have not put a date in there, presumably, it would, it would start to operate when the ordinance is signed.
I mean, but we could, we could, we could make, we could do an amendment here that, that makes it take...
Absolutely.
Makes it take effect when the board is, is actually educated or something.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't know how the mayor feels about that, uh, but I'd like to put something in there.
I think that's, I think that's the intent, so I, I would like to see it, that it will be when the board is, um, ready to start acting.
Okay.
So how would you...
Would that, would, I just want to be clear, though, what, when are you saying they're ready to act?
What, after they've completed the training. I think that's in one of these sections here.
So, Mr. Smythe, I guess that has to come in the form of a motion.
Yeah, uh, let's see if I can frame it real quickly. Um, I would move to, to modify nineteen twenty-eight O to read that complaints concerning incidents predating the creation of the board will not be accepted, um, that, um, complaints will be accepted at the time of the, uh, board's completion of its education, and, uh, would that be sufficient, just to... Or somebody got something better, a better way to word it?
Could I just make a suggestion, Mayor?
Ms. Chinowith.
I just think that...
Who said a date?
Well, the date, uh, that ordinances are passed, um, or some number of days after the ordinance is passed, that's really specific, whereas, I'm just concerned about training board members. For example, in that arts task force, we just had turnover, we're bringing new people on, it's unclear when that task force is actually constituted, so...
Should we, can we, Todd has an...
I have a suggestion, maybe we use the word convene, so that the date that the board is first convened.
The...
Okay, sure, I would take that, I, I would move that, then.
Um, so what, what section are you in?
Nineteen twenty-eight, section O. Todd, would you, would you read the way you have it worded, then, please?
Well, it should say the convening of the board, the first convening of the board, instead of the creation. Is that, would that be acceptable? Mr. O'Neil? Looking at, um, section nineteen dash twenty-eight O, instead of having the word "creation," uh, it should say complaints concerning incidents predating the first convening of the board will not be accepted. Because the board is, will not convene until the training has been...
That's my motion.
Predating the first convening. Okay, so, is it, did you have a motion, Charlie?
Yeah.
He said nothing.
And who, um, seconded it? Did anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lewis seconds it. Is there any discussion, further discussion on this amendment? If not, all those... If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
I believe that carries. Okay, now, we have a motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Mr. Smythe, which has been amended three times. Mr. Smythe.
As we move forward on developing a civilian police review board, I'd like everyone to remember that this council has shown substantial support for many different groups and many different ideas and approaches. We've moved quickly on issues where we could and taken our time when needed. We've been through this basically two years. We've tried to include the public in big-ticket items. We've ended up with something between the task force proposal several months ago and what came from our previous city attorney. In conversations, we got a memo from Jim Gitz. He clarified a number of those issues about what we really could do. And we moved back towards, back towards the task force, using some of what Jim sort of clarified. If everyone will recall, the council and Mayor Golds, the first item on our list is public safety. And we followed through with five new police officer positions in our first two budgets. Fred, for your, so that you know, each of those police officers costs fifty thousand dollars, not including equipment and cars and, you know, pensions and that sort of thing. So, you know, those five police officers have cost us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a lot more than two to ten thousand dollars that this might cost us a year. We also hired from within when Mike Beely was named police chief. Actions speak louder than words. We have full confidence in our police department. They're a professional and dedicated group of men and women. Okay, a number of council members and the mayor ran on a platform of looking at several progressive items, such as rental registration and police review boards. We're not the first to do rental registration. In fact, we're one of the last college communities in the state to enact it. The only folks behind us on that count are on the other side of Wright Street. I'm finding it hard to understand what there is to be afraid of in a review board of the sort that we've put together when other communities have found a positive outcome and usually find that the correct action has been taken by the police. Champaign, even though they rejected it five to four, is also looking at incorporating some review into different existing boards. And they're even going to incorporate non-city boards, such as the NAACP. Many communities, including ones of our size, have found improved relationships with the community through police review boards. I believe that we've found a combination that we can start with, a review and community interaction, that will help us to have an even more professional police department and, more importantly, a better and more inclusive city government. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving on, Mr. Bowersack.
The next ordinance from committee is number two thousand seven oh six oh five one. This is an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, seventeen fourteen East Airport Road, for Gregory and Denise Reynolds. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Is that Ms. Barnes? Okay. Motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Is there any discussion?
Will this finally go away?
We hope, we hope.
Yes, this is, this is the annexation petition, and this is the last step. Thank you.
We just hope they don't succeed from Urbana. Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersack.
Next is ordinance number two thousand seven oh seven oh nine oh. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the United States Department of Commerce, Bureau of the Census for a partial special census. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Ms. Barnes. Any discussion? Mr. Smythe.
Tom, will, in the process of making these adjustments, will they also correct for some of the mistakes they made last time? Like, I believe they put four hundred people in Foose Land, something like that. Will that get corrected this time around?
If you're referring to what staff believes was an undercounting of university students, this special census would not account for that because the special census is not occurring anywhere on campus. It's actually primarily southeast Urbana, with the exception of Landis Farm and Capstone Quarters. So, if there was undercounting on campus, this special census would not account for that.
I don't think it's so much an undercounting as they just simply had the wrong city or something associated with this.
Correct.
And I would want that corrected this time around.
Sure. And I was not here at the time, but in speaking with Libby Tyler earlier today, the current population of thirty-seven thousand three sixty-two actually is a correction from that initial error. There was an error that was made, and the current official population corrected that error.
So we don't have four hundred students living in Foose Land?
Not that I know of. I guess, my sort of common or question is about that same thing. I know they did do some correction, but I know still, it's the case that, you know, the U of I says twelve hundred people live at FAR, but the census still says there's six hundred, or something like that. And I think there's also the point that I just want to make sure everybody understands, that there's lots of growth downtown, new apartment buildings have come out of the ground, and, just to be clear, we're not counting those now. I know, Tom, you and I had this discussion over email, and maybe you could briefly describe why we're not counting some of those in the kind of cost-benefit analysis of having to count a whole tract? Sure. The way the special census is conducted, you receive maximum benefit by counting as many new people as possible, which means that your ideal situation is take an area that had very little population in two thousand and has seen significant growth since then. The reason that that's the case is because, as part of a special census, you're required to count everyone, including the people that were there and counted in the two thousand census. You receive only additional benefit by new population. So what that means is, you want two census areas that have seen significant growth but had very little population in the census two thousand. Again, the reason for that is, you have to pay to count everyone, but only receive additional benefit for the additional people since the two thousand census. So again, maximum benefit is, ideally, you'd have an area that had zero population in the two thousand census and has seen significant population growth since then. That's where you receive your maximum benefit. So, as I've mentioned, the most significant benefit is, we've identified southeast Urbana, which has seen significant population growth and will not involve counting a significant number of people who were there in the two thousand census. Thank you very much. Sure.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersack.
Next is ordinance two thousand seven oh seven oh eight eight. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease with Carl Reisman. This is a five-year term commencing March one of two thousand eight for two twelve West Green Street. This is the Morrow Building. I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Bowersack.
Last, we have ordinance two thousand seven oh seven oh eight nine. This is an ordinance amending Schedule J of section twenty-three dash one eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets for Smith Road at Michigan Avenue. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowersack, seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersack?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. I don't believe there are any reports of special committees. Tom Carino, Economic Development Director.
I will keep this brief, but you do have before you the economic development report for July of two thousand and seven. Just some highlights, the city did send out a request for proposal for consultants to address Cunningham Design and Beautification. The city did receive thirteen responses to that RFP, and we're in the process of reviewing those right now. Some very qualified applicants, and, again, we'll be reviewing those and selecting a consultant for that. Also, some areas where you've seen some activity, University Avenue, you've seen significant activity with a proposal from Trammell Crow already. And then, we expect to see two development proposals for the area around Lincoln and University coming soon, so a lot of activity along University. And then also in southeast Urbana, with the Meyer, the pines at Stone Creek Commons, and both the Collin Christie Clinics, you see a lot of construction happening along Windsor Road near Philo and Myra Ridge. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Bowersack.
I had one. I've gotten a lot of questions about Five Points West. I know the credit union, construction started and things are moving, but are the actual in-line shops there waiting until a certain number fill up with tenants? Are they going to get out of the ground this year before freeze? They have, they do have a local commercial real estate representative representing those properties, and they've also been in contact with several developers as well as retail tenants.
I'd like to report on a happy occasion. Next year is Urbana's one hundred and seventy-fifth birthday. And the year after that, two thousand and nine, is the two-hundredth anniversary of the birth of Abraham Lincoln. And I went to a session in Springfield held at the Lincoln Library about the celebration in the state of Lincoln's two-hundredth birthday. And I think that we could tie these two things together. The birthday of Urbana is also the birthday of Champaign County, because this city was founded to be the county seat. And I've talked with Pius Wyble and Barbara Wysocki about sharing the celebration. Dennis Roberts is the one who called this to my attention, and there's going to be a plan discussed in September about creating some kind of an architectural heritage trail in honor of Joseph Royer, who designed many of the buildings, including the courthouse and the high school. And right away, Elona, I don't know if I can pronounce her last name, Matikowski, is, has worked on this, and she and Dennis have come up with a brochure outlining these sites and everything. And Elona was talking with a woman recently who teaches children music, who right away saw the possibilities for having musical events in front of each of these buildings. And so I think we could tie this in with public art, and we could put up, get all our plaques and everything for the Lincoln sites, because right now, we're not listed in the Looking for Lincoln brochure that the state has, because we don't have any organized approach to looking at the Lincoln sites. The county is in the process of doing a museum in the courthouse. So then, we'll be able to get on this brochure. But I think we have all kinds of possibilities here for celebrating Urbana and then going on to celebrate the birthday of Lincoln. So this is a call for people who would like to work on this, either on the city council or out in the public, because I think this is going to be a lot of fun and a great way to educate people about Urbana's history and to build a sense of community and to have a lot of fun. So I hope you'll all do that. Okay, new business. First, discussion of the, a review of the liquor license fees. This was requested by Charlie some time ago. Are you going to make a presentation? Ron Eldridge, our city comptroller, is here.
Well, I'll probably try to answer questions more than presentation. Delora couldn't be here tonight. She had to have some orthopedic surgery last week. She's still in the hospital in Springfield, but recovering, getting the recovery process. So she's really the person that's probably best to answer the detailed questions. But as my memo indicated, her memo indicated, it is very difficult to compare a liquor license between cities. And they're all, every city we look at is virtually completely different, how they administer them. For example, in Urbana, we have a base fee for the various licenses. Champaign has a base fee, which is less than our base fee, but then they have additional riders that they put on their liquor license for selling various types of liquor. Those riders then increase the cost, as well as then they have a lot more record-keeping requirements placed on them. But each one of those riders, then they have to do various reports, the ratios, calculating the amounts of sales in those various categories. And then also, then the city staff has to spend time administering those riders. And so even, so that makes it even more difficult to compare the two. But I think in general, we could probably agree that the liquor license fees in Urbana are higher than Champaign, and that is mainly because, for many, many years, Champaign has not increased the price of their liquor license at all, even though we both know and admit that the cost of the service attached to the liquor license is going up every year, at least by inflation and probably more so. Last year in Urbana, probably went up five to six percent, which is what our costs went up. So if, you know, if a city decides that they're not going to increase those fees on liquor license and other permits, they're in effect, basically, underwriting the cost of that service with other revenues, property tax or sales tax or whatever it might be. And liquor licenses generates about two hundred and forty thousand here in Urbana, but licenses and permits and fees and charges that the city makes generates over five million dollars a year to the city general fund. So it's no small item in our budget that has to keep up with the cost of providing those services. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Smythe.
Well, I, this sort of came to my attention, because I was in conversations with a couple of the local bar owners, and I said I would bring it to other council members' attention. Yes, we are more expensive. The real concern is that we might be the most expensive in the state. And so I passed around a summary of some of the numbers that I found. Carbondale, you know, is twenty-two fifty, and like us, they have fairly set categories and don't have a lot of add-ons. You know, so depending, you're either twenty-two fifty or twenty-six fifty. Bloomington has the most complicated system of all. I could not figure it out. I could never figure out their base rate. You know, they have this base rate that's set at like two million dollars or something, and it's some fraction thereof. I couldn't figure, I couldn't come up with what their number was at all. Normal has a system very similar to ours. It's a base, and whether or not you do package sales, and it's, you know, twenty-five hundred or three thousand. These are last year's numbers, by the way. Peoria, they have a range, again, but their most expensive is twenty-five hundred. Springfield, seventeen fifty. Danville is very cheap, fifteen hundred, which includes package sales. Champaign's, again, it's a base fee plus capacity, plus some of the add-ons. So the bottom line is that if you, if you take a bar in Champaign and a bar in Urbana and you calculate what an Urbana bar would pay in Champaign, they would pay roughly a thousand dollars less, probably across bars. I think that's probably, is that about--
That's probably pretty close.
Pretty close.
Although, remember that they're, the way they, a lot of those structures are built around the type of restaurant bars that they have. For example, in Champaign, they have much larger seating capacities than some of their bars and restaurants than Urbana does. So it's, again, it makes it difficult to make the comparison.
Yeah. But, you know, you take, we can take an example, you know, we take our bars and try to put them in Champaign, and you can figure out what that cost is. And we're about a thousand dollars more expensive than Champaign. We're about a thousand dollars more than anybody else in the state, is what I'm really concerned about, you know. So, yeah, Champaign hasn't bothered keeping up inflation, but all these other cities haven't kept up with inflation either. So it just concerns me that we're, we might be way out of, way out of whack on this one. The flip side is that we have a number of fees, and maybe this is where this really should go, is that we have a number of fees that haven't kept up, that are lower than Champaign, are lower than other communities. Every year, we just sort of take the fees and we tack on an inflation number. We never really stop and analyze them. And I don't know how, whether it's time to sit down and go through all the fees at some point and say, you know, "These numbers are realistic, these are not. This reflects the real cost, this does not," and so on, and come up with a better chart of fees. It just strikes me that this particular set, I think we're charging a lot more than our comparables across the state, not just Champaign. And that's why I bring it up.
Ms. Chinowitz.
Just, Charlie, just for you.
Just, Charlie, just for you, you know, for public information, the last council did look at the entire fee structure, and certainly, it's under the purview of this council to also look at it again. I mean, we might make different decisions the last council. But we did take a look at it in, I think it was 2003 or 2004, is right, you know, within two years of this, seeding of this council. And in lots of cases, we did choose to keep some of the fee structures low. So, just might not want to open up the whole, you know, can of worms.
Barnes.
I was just going to say, I think it's probably a good idea to, even though it was done probably three or four years ago, it's probably a good idea to do it again and just do an evaluation of where we're at and, and look at them kind of one by one and what it's based on. I think that's, that's always good to do periodically. So, if we have questions about it, we can say, well, here's why we were doing it. We evaluated every few years and, you know, because we do want to make sure that our fees aren't such that they, you know, affect economic development, and also that we are able to, you know, cover our costs, obviously. And clearly, this is a revenue source for us, and we have to be cautious that way as well. So, we aren't quite yet in the position where we, you know, I think have the opportunity to lower some things because we have a significant amount of revenue coming in from another area, yet. But hopefully, you know, we'll be getting there and we'll be able to do some more things with this maybe in the future. But I would concur with taking a look at it again.
Mr. Bowers.
Yeah, thanks, Ron, and I thank Delora, even though she's not here, for putting this together. It's been helpful, and I thank Charlie for raising the issue. But I've got to say, after reading it all, I think I agree with the staff recommendation here, that to me, it seems like the way to sort of change how great downtown Urbana is, is not for us to spend a lot of time adjusting our liquor license fee a little. You know, even if it is $1,000 difference for a similarly-saturated bar, that's maybe a tenth of one percent or something of their revenue. It's not something that really affects someone's decision about opening a bar and having a great establishment here in Urbana. I think we should focus, instead of on, like you said, Ron, subsidizing in effect these liquor license holders, we should focus on putting public money towards the things that really do make a difference in our downtown. I think anybody who came out to the street dance the other weekend knew that it was a blast, and all kinds of people that I haven't seen in downtown recently came to our downtown, had an enjoyable time, were invited to then hang out at the iron post for the blues, or a bluegrass show afterwards. That street dance event was really wonderful, and we should be doing more things like that. I also think our spending on facade loans, our spending on, you know, bumpouts and tables and spaces in the downtown, to me, is really what will help the proprietors be successful in our downtown, will help our downtown be a great place to go, and makes more of a difference than us saying that we would tweak a fee and subsidize it. So, I appreciate this review. It's helpful to have. And at this point, I'd really like to spend our time thinking about, how do we really change the game here? How do we really take downtown Urbana to the next level with, with investments in our public infrastructure, in events, in art, in the vibrancy of our downtown?
Mr. Smythe.
I just promised I would bring this to the council's attention, which I have done. Now, at the same time, the kind of event that we had a couple weeks ago, July 28th, to be specific, what I'm hoping we can do is, and this would be, again, a UBA, there was the, 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 the music group out of Lincoln Square, the name of which escapes me, they were a major sponsor. They sponsored that group, it's the group behind them. Community Center, thank you, the Community Center for the Arts. Okay. Hopefully, we can take and expand that Saturday into roughly five events, four or five events next year, including, you know, we have the Friday night before Sweet Corn. So, there's, you know, basically, we could have one a month, say, between April and September. One that I've proposed to this, to the library board and also to, to the people involved here, is one for June, which we would, which we would work with the library, and it would involve the 5K run and walk in the morning, which we were not able to do this year because we just didn't have the time to, and the staff to do it, combined with some chamber music in the libraries, open space there, and then, plus a street festival later that evening, you know. So, that might be, that might be the Friday or Saturday, I'm sorry, the, the last Saturday in, in June, for example. And so, we, our, our goal here is to have, you know, four or five events in the, in the warmer months in downtown and get a presence and, and again, bring people to downtown in a regular way. So, if the council will support that kind of thing, then I think we can justify, exactly as you've said, Brandon, the charging a bit more because we provide more service too. But at the same time, let me suggest this, maybe the best thing to do would be, since the, since the city council looked at it four years ago, if we could just get copies of memos and discussions from then, so we can see what people were thinking, rather than have the, have staff spend any time, real time doing this, if we just dig out what was said and done before, if we could just review that real quickly, we just need it in writing, basically, to us, then we can decide if we want to do anything more, more with it than that. And as this other downtown proposals come together, I'll, I'll keep people informed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have ordinance number 2,007-08-091, an ordinance revising the annual budget. And this is for the Philo Road improvements. And we have Bill Gray, our Director of Public Works, here.
Thank you. The budget amendment amount, $125,000 would be used towards the hiring of a consulting landscape architect and streetlight consultant, and also for money to help with the cost-sharing, if you will, of businesses in the area to improve landscaping, signage, and other related work. What I provided this evening on your desk is the implementation schedule. These are targets of dates that we'd like to complete certain aspects of the project, such as hiring a consultant and holding information meetings and making a plan with the city council, and then completing design and doing construction next year. So, in some cases, hopefully, we'll, we'll beat these dates, and if there's any slippage or whatever, we'd let you know that too. But also, I want to let you know that we will be, we did purchase an edging, edger type of piece of equipment that will help with making this a better-looking area. We plan to do that work in the coming weeks, and that's where we're at.
Charlie Smythe.
Bill, is there any chance of getting some of the sidewalk repairs started this year, or is it just too late?
We thought about that, and the reason it wouldn't be good at this time is there is construction activity. A lot of the work that needs to happen is actually adjacent to the Walgreens and the lot for development north of the Walgreens, number one. Number two is there's some thought, perhaps, that maybe there would be total re-landscaping of the area between the sidewalk and curb. And quite honestly, a lot of the problems we have is through the years, the buildup of the turf is so high that the sidewalk is low, and it freezes in the winter and causes drainage-related problems. And that could be actually alleviated if we were to totally remove that turf and redo the area. So, for those two reasons, for the most part, we're not looking to do work at this time.
Danielle Chinowith.
The last time we talked about Philo Road, there was kind of a list of possible projects and dollars associated with this, and this was, it, it isn't clear what on that list and how much it is. Is there a reason for that, and in particular, how much of the consult, how much of the $125,000 is for the consultant versus for actual bricks and mortar?
Right now, the consulting fees could be in the $40,000 to $50,000 range. We don't know yet until we actually sit down and work out the scope. And secondly, the balance, at least at this point, is, is for money for cost-sharing with businesses. The other dollars for brick and mortar would be in next fiscal year.
Okay, so this is, it's particularly landscaping and signage. It does include the streetlights.
Correct.
Or the sidewalks or the street things that we discussed.
Correct.
But that might be in the CIP next year.
It would be in the CIP, and that would be part of the review for that May 5 date or sooner. But project costs that we would have identified, because the design would be complete, we'd have a better feel for those costs.
Yeah.
We would know that as part of the CIP next spring.
Okay. I, I do, I do have concerns about this, in part because we haven't really talked about the opportunity costs when we talked about a half a million last time, or 125,000. We don't talk about what we, what we aren't able to do as a result of that. And in particular, so, that, that's a concern. And the second thing is to look at, if I look at landscaping in downtown, for example, which is very beautiful, I also know it's very labor-intensive, and I guess I'm concerned that Philo Road will basically involve us doing a lot of landscaping where we have these recurring costs, and it's very intensive. And so, I'd like us to look at perennials rather than annuals. Downtown has annuals, it's very lovely. We might also want to consider going to perennials at some point with that, just because the costs are so great and we get into these recurring fees. I was just, you know, I sat there and thought, okay, what could we do with half a million dollars? And I just thought of so many different creative projects, and I felt in some ways like we weren't really having a full discussion in looking at this. So, that's a question, I make that statement, and then the question is, you know, with landscaping, are we going to be looking at, I thought you were looking at, you know, $20,000 of recurring costs every year to maintain it, and that just, it seems very high, and I would hope that the consultant could look at things to really reduce our recurring costs in that area, instead of adding more areas where we have to have people watering all the time.
Lynn Barnes.
Well, I asked Bill to put together a timeline for us tonight, so we would have a kind of a clue as to what to expect when. And of course, initially, when Bill and I talked, it was kind of disappointing to me that we couldn't do a lot that was visible this year. But the key thing that would be potentially visible this year is the work effort that our development staff might do in terms of, and our public works staff would do in working and partnering with business owners on that area, in that area, in terms of improved signage and improved landscaping. So, I think that's a very valid, good use of our dollars, and it leverages the cash that we're going to outlay, and I hope that we can see a lot of action in that, this, in the next few months, which would actually give us some visibility and, at a fairly low price. So, I, I think this plan is good. I think the council will have a chance to review the, the plans that are vetted by the neighbors and the community, and that'll be a positive. You know, I hear what Danielle's saying, gosh, there's a lot of things we could spend, you know, maybe half a million dollars on. I think, Bill, you and I kind of talked, well, you mentioned at our meeting a couple weeks ago, that if we did spend a half a million, some of that would be stuff that had been planned anyway to be done. So, actual new things would be lesser amount. And the other point is, is that, you know, we haven't spent a lot of money on this strip in ages. You know what I mean? I mean, I, I don't, haven't looked up the history, but I would, it would be interesting to know, what have we spent there, other than the few plantings and the bit of watering that we've done for that area. And I think that that end of town, we have such an opportunity now, you know, I can only reiterate, that opportunity that we have. And I think for us to not invest and capitalize in a significant way on it would be a major mistake. So, I, I'm pleased with this, and I'd like to see this, like every 60-day report from our public work staff about kind of how we're doing, you know, in terms of the expenditures of these funds, and, and, you know, and kind of see that through this November 1st date of 2008.
I would like to add that it would be ready in time for Urbana's 175th birthday, too. Mr. Lewis.
I just wanted to ask, when they do a project like, you know, I'm for the beautification alongside sidewalks and squaring away Philo Road, I think it's in, in need. But I think in conjunction with that, I think you also need to look at, what is the real return on investment in, in short-term and long-term? What does it look like in terms of how, if you put out 125,000, what do you anticipate getting back?
Lynn Barnes.
That would be an interesting exercise to try to do, frankly. And I have to tell you that.
It's not an exercise, you can do it these days.
Well, you, I think you can, but I think initially, some of it, some of it's going to have to be done on a little bit of vision, I think.
I understand.
And I think that making a statement such as this, and frankly, I, I plan to take this, this little timeline, you know, any chance I have to talk to a developer who's been talking, you know, with us about, you know, Philo Road, I, I hope we can show this, you know, and say, hey, here's what the city's doing, you know. I hope you step up and put some development there, here's what we're doing. And so, I think it'll be, it'll be in that tax, sales tax, you know, from businesses, property tax, I mean, those are the things that we need to get more action on and more traction on, you know, in Philo Road. So, you know, there's probably a way to calculate it, but those are the two things that we need to calculate.
Heather Stevenson.
Well, Lynn just took the words right out of my mouth when, when Mr. Roberts asked, or Mr. Lewis, sorry, asked how we see our return on our investments. I was going to say, when, when we get the tax return from people going, I mean, I'd much rather go to a business that looks appealing than to one that has weeds growing all around it. And so, I would say that that's how we, how we see the return on our, our investment, is that we have more economic development, we have more people shopping in stores and spending their top tax dollars in the city of Urbana.
I, I think it is important to track these things. I've asked the staff about that, that we should, as Mr. Lewis says, we should really look at these investments and then see what works and what doesn't work, so that we can learn from it. Charlie Smythe.
Yeah, along those same lines, I think, I think the big key here is that, you know, some of this, a lot of this money's going to be used as a match, a lot of it's going to be used to get a vision, and, you know, that's, we've got a lot of activity going on from, from, from one end to the other, from Florida all the way to Windsor here. We want to take advantage of what other people are already investing in there to partner with them, you know, the kind of, you know, if, if we're going to get a new Walgreens there, we obviously can redo the whole section there in front of Walgreens at the same time, using their money and ours. So, any, anything we can take advantage, any way we can, any, any way we can take advantage of that kind of a, of a joint development, and at the same time, have a vision for the whole block, over the whole, is it half a mile in length, or quarter of a mile? It's a whole mile? Oh, okay. You'd think I, as a bicyclist, would know the length of the street. You're right, it is a mile.
Well, we could call it the magnificent mile when we get done.
Yeah. I don't know that I want to call it that, but I would move, I would move approval of this ordinance.
Okay. Okay, motion by Mr. Smythe, second by Ms. Barnes. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? Mayor Pressing? Yes. That ordinance passes. Next is ordinance number 2,007-08-092, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, Habitat for Humanity of Champaign County, the Home Builder Blitz Program. We have John Schneider here to explain this.
Good evening. Basically, this agreement is for a project that was authorized in the fiscal year 2006, 2007 Annual Action Plan. And it provides $74,999 in home and local match funds for the development of new affordable housing, single-family homes. It actually provides $14,999 in down payment, direct down payment assistance to five-income qualified buyers who work with Habitat for Humanity, and they also invest. They have a sweat equity investment in each home that is built. And the Urbana Community Development Commission reviewed this agreement at their July 24th meeting and forwarded to council with a recommendation for approval.
Danielle Chinowith.
I move approval. Second?
Motion by Ms. Chinowith, second by Ms. Barnes. Any further discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Is this, how many houses are we looking at, the same amount as last, last year? Five? I'm sorry.
It's five. It's the same, it's, the project has changed just a little bit in that originally, it was proposed to provide upfront site development funding. We changed it to, or Habitat actually requested to change it for down payment assistance when the property is completed, when the project is completed. So, it's, it'll be five homes.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That ordinance carries. Ordinance number 2,007-08-093, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plan for the Washington Square Second Subdivision. And Robert Myers, our chief planner. And Robert Myers, our, uh, chief planner, is here.
Well, uh, you reviewed the preliminary plat, this is for a, a commercial subdivision, two lots on Philo Road. So this would be the final plat, and should this be approved tonight, uh, then the plat can be, um, along with other necessary documents filed and built upon. If you have any other questions, we've incorporated, um, we tried to specify in terms of the sidewalk, both on the face of the plat and then also, um, in the ordinance itself, to be clear about when sidewalks would go in.
Charlie Smythe.
Yeah, though I support this, I still have a quick question for Bill, and I should have called him today and asked him about it. I still don't understand why we can't just, uh, uh, turn over the, uh, the, the access road that, you know, once upon a time was thought to go all the way through, but now it's going to have a hammerhead, hammerhead turnaround. Why, why not just turn over the, that to the three properties that are there so that they, so that they all have, uh, equal rights to in and out of there or something like that, rather than keeping it a city property?
I think the main reason is, is the actual working out of those types of crossseasements or what have you. And if we vacate that street, you know, half the street goes to, you know, respective properties and, you know, typically, and we have cul-de-sac streets in town in many locations, and I think there's a certain duty the public, you know, expects that we would maintain streets, and we vacate it, and then it's, you know, their responsibilities, their expense, and I don't know that we want to, unless they're requesting that we'd like, they'd want us to vacate it, um, I'm not so sure that those businesses will pick up the expense of following it or fixing it and drainage and related costs, because it becomes a private matter versus a public matter.
Yeah, I guess, as I've, as I've, as I've gone by there, I never even realized it was, wasn't privately owned. That's why I say, you know, it, it looks like it's a parking lot essentially, or part of a parking lot, and I don't know why we wouldn't be able to treat it that way, um, from here out, you know.
Admittedly, some of the, uh, parking patterns on that street are a bit odd, and I'm not sure how that came about, but, um, it is what it is. But, you know, council wants us to contact property owners and, and look for vacation, we can do that. But I think when they realize that it's their expense, I doubt they're going to want to have the street vacated.
No, but that it's our expense, I mean, you know, at the same time, you know. I mean, you know, we're maintaining, to me, a private parking lot.
Is it a treeless parking lot?
Yeah, it is, actually.
The other factor, too, if I can, uh, add something, is almost always, there's a requirement in our subdivision ordinance that new lots front on a public street, so that every property has access from a public street, and that's virtually always the case. Now, there's a few exceptions to that. In this case, there's a lot, if we vacated the street, that would not front on any public street, so they'd be landlocked. So it would create a situation where the property would be landlocked. Now, there's ways to deal with that, but ideally, we'd like every lot to front on a public street.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stevenson, second by Mr. Lewis, Robert Lewis.
Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Chinowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That ordinance carries. Uh, next, mayoral, mayoral appointments and reappointments. Is anybody interested in appointing people to the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission?
I would move approval of the, um, recommended appointments and reappointments from the mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Chinowith, second by Ms. Barnes. Any discussion? Brandon, did you want to say something?
Yeah, real briefly, thanks again for having this commission. At some point, I'll come here and give sort of an update of the things we've done, but work is going wonderfully. Um, I'm glad all these people are serving, but actually, I'm not going to vote on the appointments, because I'm one of the people, and I feel like that would just be some sort of appearance of a conflict, so, uh, but please vote for me and, and all these other, and all these other folks that are doing a good job, too. That's right.
Charlie Smythe.
And I'm recusing myself because I'm related to one of the people on here.
Okay. All right.
Do we still have a forum?
Do we have enough people to do this? I think we do.
Yeah.
I guess this is just a motion.